Good evening, like to call this June twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen Fayetteville City Council meeting to order. Ask for the Minister Arthur Coleman of the Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church to come forward, please. Lead us with the invocation, please remain up here when you're finished, sir. We're gonna all stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and our City Council, let us pray. God of power, might, wisdom, and justice. Father, I ask that you bless our city and our city leaders. May they seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant it that they may lead and have protection and to lead our city with honesty and integrity. Give those in authority wisdom in every decision that they make. Direct their steps according to your word. For our men and women are in uniform, to all of our police officers, to all of our firefighters, to all of our first responders, and to all of our city employees. Help them to make the courage and faith in you, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty, justice for all.
Pastor Coleman, tell us something about the, the mission at Mount Calvary.
Well, first of all, good afternoon, it's good to see you again, Mayor and all the City Council. I'm the Associate Pastor of Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church. We have several programs that I'd like to outline. Uh, we have what we call the Meal on Wheels, which feeds the senior citizens five days a week, uh, off of the Doc Bennett Road and in that area. The Closed Closet, which is open three days a week, on-call seven days a week. We also go to the Nursing Home Ministry, uh, every Thursday. We also help sponsor United Tutorial Program, which improve in reading and test scores for the kids. Our morning service starts at eight forty-five is Sunday school, nine forty-five is our worship service, and Bible studies from six-thirty to seven-thirty on, uh, Wednesday. And I left out one more, every, uh, end of the year, we have the Soul to Soul Program, which is issuing out free tennis shoes to all the kids, uh, in the area.
Thank you, sir, what is the location of your, uh, your church?
Forty-three twenty Doc Bennett Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, right before you go over ninety-five and right before the racetrack.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
We'll move into the announcements and recognitions and, uh, like to call first on Bobby Hurst for, uh, announcement on our boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the City of Fayetteville is looking to its citizens to help fill various, uh, number of vacancies on our boards and commissions. We have eleven boards and commissions, uh, that need vacancies, like the planning, the zoning, uh, parks and rec, human relations, appearance, and PWC. And so you'll have the month of July till, uh, close of Business Day on July thirty-first. To go to our website, cityoffayetteville.org, or call our city clerk, Ms. Pamela McGill, at four-three-three nineteen-eight-nine and fill out an application, you can do it online. And we encourage you to, uh, sign up and join us on one of our, uh, eleven in, in, where we need the vacancies, boards and commissions in the month of July, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst, how long have you been chairing that, uh, nominations committee?
Since two thousand and seven.
Great, thank you. Uh, Deputy City Manager Christoph Bauer.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to give a quick update to the council and the community regarding some of the storm debris damage that we got this last weekend, actually Friday evening, we had a number of trees down in the roadway. We had about twenty-five actually, uh, trees in the roadway. And, uh, just, we had crews out Friday night and Saturday morning doing what we call a cut and shove, which basically just gets the stuff out of the roadway, that's our most urgent, uh, need to make that happen initially. Uh, that created, of course, some piles on the side of the road, which a number of you commented on. We're in the process today of actually getting out there and cleaning the, that side of the roads up, and should have that up in the next couple of days with work from both our streets crews and our parks crews. Now, there are also other debris that is out there, of course, in people's yards and so forth, so I want to remind the public of a couple of things. Uh, one is that there, we will have, uh, more than usual, uh, capacity or, or demand for use for our yard waste. So that may put our services a little bit behind, so we're gonna ask everybody's patience in our yard waste. Please put it out there and, uh, leave it there till we can get to it. We're gonna bring in some people on overtime on Wednesday for some additional collection to catch up if, if we need to. Uh, just a reminder that anything you put out on the curb, if, uh, as much as possible, can you get that containerized for us? Put it in containers, if you, if it's too big to be containerized, uh, you cut it to five-foot lengths and then we'll get it up. Uh, so if you do that now, also, it's an obligation that if you do have a contractor in to remove a tree, then that contractor has the obligation of taking that waste away to the landfill. But anything that you do yourself and get it out to the street in appropriate form, uh, we'll take care of it for you. If you have any questions or concerns about that, please give us a week to sort of catch up. And if we have any additional problems, uh, give us a call at four-three-one Fay on next Monday, or use Fay Fix It to report it and we'll get it out of the way, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, so I'd like to offer a, uh, a note of congratulations to, uh, to staff on the effort with Fay Fix It. Um, I actually forwarded to Mr. Reinstein a couple of, uh, comments that were forwarded to me by citizens and how pleased they are with, with One Fay and how well it's working and, uh, kudos to you guys. And, and as Mr. Bauer just said, if you got an issue, that's a great way to identify it for city staff and it goes into our work order process, so, so good job.
Thank you, at this time, we'd like to call Ms. Lisa Smith to the podium as we present this award. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the City of Fayetteville the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Fourteen. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. This marks the ninth consecutive year that the City of Fayetteville has received this award. This award, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, meets the high standards of certificate program, including demonstrating a spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and users groups to read this report. At this time, we'll like to give a round of applause to Lisa Smith and Ms. Elizabeth Solmendike, the city's internal auditor, are here tonight to accept this award on behalf of the city and its financial department.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, this is, uh, such an honor for me to present this to our finance group. Um, I was just speaking with Ms. Smith, she's been here twenty-seven years, Mayor Pro Tim, that may be older than you are. Um, but, uh, uh, thank you so much for your work, Lisa, with the city and, and your whole team and, and doing what you do.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
At this time, we have another presentation, would like to call, um, the, the two members here, Christian Elliott and Josiah Daniel, to the podium, please, along with our fire chief and firefighters. It's an opportunity for our residents to hear about another wonderful story. On Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, at approximately five forty-five PM, a house fire was dispatched at five-one-oh-five Birch Road off Hope Mills Road. Prior to the fire department's arrival, the homeowner's sister, Joyce Evans, was visiting and smelled smoke. She went to the neighbor's house to see if they could help, her identifying the location and where the smoke was coming from. Upon returning to the house, she noticed smoke coming from the near rear of the structure. At this point, she called nine-one-one by her cellphone. The next-door neighbors noticed the smoke and ran across the front yard, entered the residence and carried the disabled homeowner, Mr. David Mace, from the structure. All of this was done with no hesitation for their safety, their own safety. The names of these two neighbors that are here today are Christian Elliott and Josiah Daniel. Both men, young men, are eighteen years old. Due through their quick action and them being true hometown heroes, we'd like to present them this certificate and coin of appreciation.
It is certainly my honor to, uh, present this to Joshua Daniel and Christian Elliott, that's your certificates, uh, actually, let me read the certificate. For demonstrating extraordinary bravery and courage on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, by entering a burning home, don't try that at home. Your quick action was instrumental in saving a life, so thank you very much on behalf of the City Council. There's your city coin. And now Chief Major has another presentation for you on behalf of the fire department.
And on behalf of the fire department, we want to present, uh, Joshua and, um, um, Christian with two plaques to show our appreciation. And we realize you always wanted to first to say, it takes a partnership to help keep this community safe and make it a better place for all, so we appreciate, uh, your efforts in protecting our community. Joshua, and I'll read this right quick, Heroism Award. In recognition for your outstanding efforts on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, in which you demonstrated personal courage, uh, daring and self-sacrifice and performing high-risk rescue in the face of, uh, threat, fire, heat, and smoke. Joshua Daniel, um, we present you with this award. So to Joshua. And also to Christian Elliott, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Chief, thank you as well. Council, at this time, we'll move to item five-point-zero, which is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Moan, seconded by Mr. McDougall. Any discussion on the motion, council, sing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item six-point-zero is the consent.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Moan, seconded by Mr. Hurst. Any discussion on the motion? Sing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item seven-point-zero-one is the annual report of the Fayetteville Planning Commission. Good evening.
I'm Dr. William Fiden, uh, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Uh, Mr. Mayor, President Pro Tim of the Council, Council Members, City Staff, and our advisory staff, Scott and Karen. I'm pleased to present you this report, and I think you have a copy of it. I'm gonna highlight some of the issues and, uh, um, points made. Uh, as you know, the, uh, Planning Commission, um, uh, has the obligation and the opportunity, uh, to look at long-range planning initiatives uh, or amendments to the Development Code, and that is, of course, the UDC, which, as I've come to realize, is chapter thirty of the city code. Um, there are nine board members, uh, uh, that we have, uh, appointed by you. There are two alternative board members, uh, in case, uh, uh, of absences and to establish a quorum. Um, the approval of long-range plans and making recommendations, uh, to the City Council to you regarding amendments, uh, to the Development Code and area plans is one of our duties. We also have decided, uh, request for large development alternative signage plans, which, uh, deals with, uh, large signs on sites over ten acres. We also deal with new neighborhood compatibility permit, which is part, um, of a planning, uh, uh, toolbox, and, uh, so far, two cases of that, and occasionally appeals of a technical review committee, which we've had none to date. Now, I might, uh, just highlight, and, and this was interesting, that apparently in privately-owned buildings, we have sixty-seven thousand, six hundred privately-owned buildings and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three publicly-owned buildings. Um, so we have a fairly large, uh, area, uh, of purview. In terms of issues and analysis of, obviously, as I mentioned, two main arenas, uh, development standards and long-range plans, uh, both of which, uh, obviously impact the, uh, economy and quality of life. Uh, the toolbox I alluded to, uh, has a number of options in terms of cottage development, adaptive reuse, um, the, uh, regional activity center overlay, which is called RACO, uh, live-work units, uh, urban agricultural uses, and research and technology production uses, and lastly, suburban activity center overlay, or SACO. So we have RACO and SACO. Um, we, uh, yeah, out of this toolbox, uh, there is a large development, uh, alternative signage plan, which I mentioned, and neighborhood compatibility permits, which is a, something short of a special use permit, but does require, uh, Planning Commission and then your action. Uh, ten signage plans have now been approved for various sites. Uh, for example, the Cross Creek Mall, uh, Methodist University, uh, and their banners along Ramsey Street, and, uh, four church campuses, which had requested special signs. And then during two thousand and fourteen, we approved the last of the changes to resolve twenty-nine points of concern, uh, presented, uh, by the Home Builders Association. And, um, over this year, there were about thirteen, uh, of those that we finally, uh, addressed and hopefully resolved. And as noted, the more stable this, uh, document becomes, that is the planning code, the easier it is for staff and developers alike to understand and apply the standards. And we should note that the N-code, which is a computer-based, uh, out, uh, port, portrayal of the city code now exists, so that, uh, uh, planners and developers can now, uh, address the city code online and, and have a, a quick reference to their section of interest. Um, the, um, suburban activity center overlay, or SACO, and the regional activity center overlay were, were addressed. And, uh, the latter, the RACO, was modeled after the Ramsey Street corridor, uh, recommendations to facilitate development at a denser, more urban scale. Um, now, um, we were fortunate, as you know, to have a new position authorized by you, the City Council, a, to have a comprehensive planner, and the person of Will Deaton, uh, who is going to, uh, address a new comprehensive plan to replace the two thousand and ten plan. Um, we have already heard a summary of the stra- strategic action plan getting underway by the Downtown Alliance, uh, which is working with the city. And we received the first portion of our Planning, uh, Commissioner, uh, dealing with, uh, the downtown, um, downtown signage standards. And so that item, which we've just, uh, uh, addressed, will be forwarded to you. Um, so, Mr. Deaton will work on a comprehensive plan with, in particular, the downtown and riverfront as initial focal points. Uh, in this regard, I, I want to mention, uh, and, and he highlighted the fact of dust bunnies. And that is comprehensive plans that sit on the shelf and gather dust. And I urge you not to let that happen, we, we have the Ramsey Street Corridor Plan, we have the Murchison, uh, and we have the Bragg Boulevard, uh, comprehensive plan. And if they just sit on the shelf, all of that work and effort will go for naught. Uh, of that, or dealing with that, I want to mention a few things. Gateway monuments are important, and, uh, coming in from the east side of the city, there is one. I want to do, uh, meant, or urge you to replace the gateway monument that was, uh, taken down by the Beltway, so that as you're coming out of Fort Bragg, what used to be a gateway sign is gone. It was very attractive, similar to the one, I think, what is it, Route twenty-four that comes into the city from the east, uh, anyway. Also, we obviously want to highlight trees and green spaces, uh, consider a trolley system, uh, maybe a downtown grocery store, uh, and a downtown hotel, which may be forthcoming. So these are all things that would improve, I think, the quality of life, uh, that as, as we address issues. And, um, we would look forward certainly to, uh, possibly having some joint meetings with you, our members with you, uh, as we address some of these issues. And, um, I might mention, uh, that in terms of, and this is perhaps, uh, some of my observations, but in terms of downtown safety, I, I really do believe that a policeman walking the beat would be a great deterrent to people being approached by vagrants for money. Uh, and, uh, I think this is a real issue. And I think, uh, uh, on, on, uh, a policeman on, on, walking the beat i- is the best, uh, uh, way to, um, to make, make that presence visible. And I, lastly, on my part, I want to mention that our rules and, um, bylaws mention that commission members may speak publicly as private citizens on, uh, planning matters. However, in such cases, they should indicate that they are presenting their own opinions. And I, I did forward an email, I think in December, which was perhaps misperceived as representing the Planning Commission, but in fact was my own opinion. So with that, uh, if you have any questions or observations.
In fact, we do have a couple of questions, Mayor Pro Tim Davy.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, just a couple of questions, it sounds like you all are working really hard and you're excited, as you said, with the extra position, and we're glad we were able to do that. Um, how do you feel reaching out to the county has been in regards to, to developing this? You know, revising the twenty-ten plan.
Interacting with the county?
Yes.
Well, as far as I know, obviously, we follow the lead of our staff, and to that extent, uh, I, I think we've had some inner, uh, interaction, and I think Scott would be probably most knowledgeable about that. Uh, I don't know, Scott, any comments?
Yeah, it'd probably be a good time to kind of get an update on how that's, that working as we're talking about the consulting for the new planning plan. As we have some wonderful plans that you address that you don't want to just sit on the shelf and collect dust.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, we're gonna obviously reach out to the counties as we start our comprehensive plan, and, and Mr. Deaton is, um, identifying a list of stakeholders to start, uh, getting, uh, their involvement, and we're moving forward with that, so, uh, I think it's a great point. If you're doing comprehensive planning, you've got to coordinate with, um, all of the local actors, including the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the, uh, the county planning staff and, uh, and a multitude of others. So we're, we're preparing that and starting to move forward.
And one, one quick question specifically about the plans that you mentioned, the Bragg Boulevard, Murchison Road, Ramsey Street. What do you need from us, is you're saying that those plans are already drafted, it's just not funded, is what you're?
No, the, the plans have a specific implementation, uh, element, so for example, um, the Ramsey Street plan called for, um, uh, some market analysis, which has been done. It also called for the creation of the, uh, suburban, uh, Activity Center Overlay, which, uh, Dr. Fiden has referred to and y'all have approved. Um, we are now looking to, uh, to take the, the more, uh, urban mixed-use type of, uh, development that's called for in both of those plans, and, um, we've, uh, retained a consultant to help us with, uh, uh, identifying how we do the outreach to developers who do that s- s- kind of specialized type of work and market ourselves as, uh, uh, in a successful way to, to draw that type of development to our town. So we're, we're implementing them and, um, and, uh, the comprehensive plan will further bring them forward because it will include, uh, uh, many of the, um, because it will include many of the zoning and land use changes, that land use plan changes that are called for in those plans.
Mr. Colvin.
Dr. Fiden, I appreciate the presentation. I would like to see if I could coordinate with maybe Mr. Schufa or someone from staff to get you to come in on one of the gateway committee meetings. Because a lot of what you talked about is what we're talking about, so we can make sure that we're on the same page.
Right, very good.
We'll be reaching out to you shortly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. No further questions. I thank you for your time and interest, and we hope to continue serving the city.
Thank you very much. We appreciate what you're doing for the city as well. At this time, we'll move into the public hearings. Items eight point zero one, eight point zero two, and the eight point zero one, which is, will be a special use permit, will not have a time limit on it, but the others will. So individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side being discussed. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless your group wishes to appoint just one speaker. The time used in response to a question from a council member will not be counted against your time. Discussion following the public hearing will be limited to this body only unless someone from this chair is recognized, recognizes you to answer a question. So when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have thirty seconds left to speak. When the red light comes on, your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the time that's given to you. Mr. Harmon.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first case that we have before you tonight is a special use permit application. So if we could get all speakers over to the clerk's area first and get them signed in or sworn in.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we only have one speaker for this item, Mr. Greg Spears. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth?
Again, the first case we have before you tonight is a special use permit. It's for self-service storage, or what we used to call mini-storage warehousing. Basically, just these, these will be climate-controlled indoor units for personal storage of effects. Property is located at sixty-two thirty-two Bragg Boulevard. As I show you the map, everyone here should basically recognize that as the old Stereo World property on North Bragg Boulevard, just before you get to the new two ninety-five. As you can see, you've got the Shaw property to the east, still heavily wooded, residentially zoned. To the north, and to the west, commercial zoning districts. And then more that Shaw property to the south as well, that's still residentially zoned. As you can see on the aerial that we have here, there are three buildings currently on the property, two fairly large ones, and then a third smaller building, this back in this southeast corner. The property is currently a commercial use property. And on our land use plan, it calls for this area to be part of an activity node for the two ninety-five corridor. This is a site plan that's proposed as part of this development. Again, you should mainly be familiar with that building since it is kind of, or buildings, because they are, right as you're coming into town, they're on Bragg Boulevard, and they are in quite a bit of state of disrepair at the moment. They have some very large, some large sign poles, you can see the shadows of those out here. And the current parking lot is in very bad shape as well. The main thing that what this will do is make this site look a lot better than it does now. This may not be what you consider the highest and best use for this corner, but it will be a big improvement over what's there now. And hopefully, new development or redevelopment of this site will help to spur some other things in that area once people see some money being spent on that end of Bragg Boulevard. But again, what they're looking to do is the two larger buildings will be climate-controlled self-storage facilities. Upgrading their parking lot, right now, there are no islands or trees within the parking lot. They'll have to add those to meet our UDO code. Open space will have to be provided as well. They'll have to meet our current signage ordinance, things of that nature. They have to put, all mini-storage warehousing is required to have fencing along the front. It can't be barbed wire fencing, it can't be things of that nature. Typically, what we see are wrought iron fences with brick pillars every so often. So that should help as well in the looks of this site. Just a few photos of the property itself. This is the smaller building back in the corner. Just a photo from Bragg Boulevard. Again, the rather large signs that are still left over are signage poles for the old Stereo World. And then the two main buildings that they'll be using for self-storage. An area, just to give you an idea, you can see some of the busted up asphalt in the front part of the picture. And then the foreground is an area that'll be turned into their open space with trees and things of that nature. Just some more photos of the asphalt in the parking lot, mainly just showing the disrepair of that. The conditions of approval, we've got the site plan that we looked at a moment ago. Upgrade to landscaping to meet UDO standards. Repair the severely damaged parking lot and limit on signage to what's allowed in the UDO. Zoning commission and staff have recommended approval. And that was based on the land use plan calling for this property to be part of an activity node for I two ninety-five. That list of four conditions I just went through a moment ago. The fact this is a rehabilitation and reuse of a current, currently unused structure, structures. And then them meeting all of the use-specific standards that are listed in your packet. There are quite a few for self-storage things, so I didn't put them on this presentation. Mr. Mayor, do you have, or council have any questions of me before we open your public hearing?
Yep, just a couple. Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question I may ask, Mr. Spears, but you said here the applicant may also rent moving trucks as well as auto rentals. But yet, here in the standards, there's no allowable storage bays to service or repair the vehicles. So he can, he can, or they, he, she, can have as many trucks or autos to rent as well as a mini-storage facility, but they can't repair or do the?
Correct. They could not do the repair work. Currently, the, this property is owned for heavy commercial, and they could do something like a U-Haul rental out of this property. And I think that's what they're hoping to do, is something of that nature or storage of a small area that, for storage of vehicles that would be part of, maybe people who are being deployed. If that's the case, there are screening standards that the city has that they will have to adhere to. So it basically would be an area where from Bragg Boulevard, you wouldn't be able to see into it. But that's, really, right now, tonight, we're looking at the, the special use permit is for the storage facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Right. Some of that will most likely have to come down. You, they're going to have to meet the new requirements of the UDO as far as signage. That's based on how much road frontage they have. And, you know, in the past, there've been everything from several signs, even on the tower there, to a big gorilla, to all kinds of things on that site, so, you know. Yeah, that's a good. That's a very good question. To be self-storage warehousing, any of the sides that have to, that are visible from the public right-of-way have to be a brick facade. So in the photo that's still up on your screen there, the gray building, you know, has to have a brick facade or to, if it's brick now, it has to come back to where it looks like brick. If you've noticed any of the, if you travel down Bragg Boulevard a little south of here, you'll see a couple of newer mini-storage warehousing facilities. And you'll notice they have, they're under the newer regulations where they have the wrought iron fencing with brick columns in between. They have the facades that face the road are all brick. The bays for those can't face the road.
All of this is a part of the condition of the actual?
All of that is part of the use standards.
Okay.
So it's something that anytime anyone does mini-storage warehousing, they have to adhere to those.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Harmon, you touched what I wanted to know a little bit. Can you grab a couple pictures or any examples of what the new standard, one of these similar businesses under the new standards look like? I heard you said with some, some close by.
There are. I don't know that I can get them up right here.
I guess I may ask him when he comes up for his part, if he has any examples of any other businesses that he's done that, you know, give us an idea of what kind of facility he can expand.
I can tell you that on, you know, a little south of here on Bragg Boulevard, there's a facility. If you turn onto Santa Fe, across the road from the Military Business Park, is a new facility out there. That one is completely contained within the building. The ones south of here on Bragg Boulevard are ones you access from outside. And so like I said, if they access from outside, the bay, the storage bays can't be seen from the road or not directly seen from the road.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. Ms. Jensen.
Yes, I have a question. I don't know if I'm, if I can get the answer in the forum that we're in. The picture of the signs.
Next one.
That one's fine. That sign I'm seeing, it's broken.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my question is, when the, when it's vacant like that, does the owner, are they responsible for it? So if we don't approve, I'm just asking the question so I can get my, if we don't approve this, would inspections go out and look at that sign?
I'm not in code enforcement, but I do believe that they, it's up to the owner to keep that in compliance.
Okay. So I guess what my question is, these signs that look like they've been like that for a while.
Quite a while.
And probably no code enforcement because they're still there. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, don't know the answer to that one.
All right. I see no further questions. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have one speaker for this item, Mr. Greg Spears.
Welcome, Mr. Spears.
Thank you so much. I think I can answer most of your questions. I know the signage is a concern. It was for me as well. When I met with the zoning and signing people, I've been working for ninety days with our staff, and they're awesome. I've got a lot to accomplish, and it's gonna take a lot of money, but I'm willing to do it. I've got about eleven pages of small type that I'm gonna comply with. And it's, it's pretty expensive, but it's gonna look like nothing else on Bragg Boulevard, I promise you. With the signage, I can keep every sign. It's grandfathered. I could keep all those nasty-looking signs on the building. I can keep the pole signs, but I don't, I'm not gonna do that. All the signs are gonna be removed from the buildings. The sign that's crooked, that happened recently in a big storm. The wind actually blew that sign up the way it is. So all the signs on the building, all those pole signs are coming down. The only sign, I'm keeping the tower. Those plates, though, are coming down. There's some worn plates. And if you'll see, a lot of nice commercial projects, they'll have a tower sign. And eventually, I'll have a digital, hopefully, on the bottom. And then there are ten-by-nine areas. There's four areas. All the other signs will be, will be gone. So the top sign will probably advertise, it's gonna be American Heroes Storage. And then, you know, the U-Haul truck rentals. But it'll look a lot better once I take all the signs off the building. The shingle roof has a lot of discolor on it. I'm getting ready to spend quite a bit, twenty-eight hundred dollars next week to have that cleaned. It'll look like brand-new shingles. They take a Clorox, my roofer, and those shingles will look brand-new next week. The existing buildings are in good shape. Outside, my plan is to paint the brick to whatever color the staff recommends, a neutral color. Right now, the brick building is showing about three different brick colors. You can tell where the original owner added on to the building. That's one brick color. So to keep it like that, it doesn't look very attractive. So an off-white, beige, you know, I'll be painting the brick. Entering in from the street, there's a little awning now. I'd like to do a nicer, maybe a backlit canopy on that. So the existing structures will completely be cleaned of any signage, updated and painted. Inside, all the storage is inside, even the vehicles. So I'm not gonna be screening vehicles on the outside. The vehicles are inside, the belongings and the different units. And if you want to see a really nice example, the American flag at Santa Fe going into the Military Business Park is an awesome-looking facility. And the other American flag down the road on Bragg Boulevard, as Craig mentioned, that's a nice one. So this is first class. It's not, you know, it's gonna be a definite upgrade. But where they took an existing building in town and converted it to indoor storage is where the Kroger building used to be on Hope Mills Road. If you ever get a chance, I mean, inside, these, it's gonna be sparkling. I mean, you're talking, the floors are done, the walls are done, the lighting. When you walk in, you know, it's just, it's first class. And the one where the Kroger was, it's down in the hill, that's indoor storage now. American Flag did that one. And I mean, it really looks nice. So, you know, everything is gonna be first class inside and out. The landscaping, I think there's a hundred and fifty trees and bushes they're requiring. There's sidewalk to nowhere. Everything I'm gonna do, because I was born and raised in Fayetteville, and my ancestors were the first settlers in Fayetteville, and I want it to be right, and I want to be proud of it. I'll have a large American flag if allowed. There's a huge flagpole, about an eighty-foot flagpole. So when people come into Fayetteville, this is gonna be nice. I mean, I'm talking a couple hundred thousand just to get the outs, the parking lot, the outside, the buildings, the landscaping. So, you know, you want to leave it like it is now, overgrown and nasty-looking, or do you want it to look good? And the zoning commission approved it unanimously, unanimous. And if you've got this booklet, the zoning commission, it's real thorough on what I have to do, and it's recommended, you know, by the staff. But if you get a chance, because I think you, when you say mini-storage, it's no longer, it's indoor climate-control storage. And when you walk in a facility, Charlotte, there's several projects that my developer is advising me. They're taking a lot of manufacturing plants and industrial buildings in Charlotte and converting them to storage. On South Boulevard, he's doing a few. He does them all over the southeast. So my advice is coming from a gentleman that owns a bunch of the locations and does them all over the southeast. And it's first class. Everything inside is gutted. Everything inside is gutted, new lighting, new electrical, new plumbing, even though you don't need much plumbing. Floors are done, walls are painted, uh, it's, it's really nice. And the units inside, I was surprised, is nice metal. It's kinda like the outside units you see, but some of those can start looking bad. They start, you know, the weather starts affecting them. Inside, it's pristine. These units are first-class. They're nice aluminum with roll-up doors. Um, I mean, it sparkles inside. So, uh, but that Kroger would be a good one to visit. But nothing will be visible outside. Everything is stored indoors. And if I'm fortunate to do the U-Haul, I had U-Haul, uh, at another business. I had a, at a car wash and, and car lot on Rayford. All the U-Hauls will be neatly placed, uh, in order, uh, and, you know, there's a bunch of them already in, in the area, Penn Ski down the street. But, uh, everything's gonna be landscaped first-class. And, uh, but I know the signage is concerning.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. We got a question.
Okay.
Sir, are you gonna store cars?
Vehicle storage is something that's, uh.
Vehicles include pickup trucks?
Whatever will fit through my door.
How will they go in and at what hours will they be able to go in?
Okay, the building at the bottom of the hill, uh, has twelve-by-twelve roll-up doors, automatic doors. I've just had one repaired. Uh, and there was one on Legion Road, uh, that I saw, that I visited and, and got some good advice from that owner. Uh, he's since moved the cars to another location. Uh, Metz Glass Stores Cars Indoors, next to Valley Mercedes. So, rather than keep them outside where they can be vandalized, it'll be secured inside, so.
What hours will, okay, I've, I've got a bin from you. I've got a car. I'm going overseas. I wanna store it. What hour can I put that car in there?
I'll be open from nine to six, Monday through Saturday, and ten to four on Sunday. So, we'll accept vehicles during those hours. And then, of course, once they're stored, you crank them up two or three times a month. You move them off the spot so the tires don't , uh, deteriorate. But, uh.
But I can't, I can't be going back in there at one o'clock in the morning.
No. This is gonna be a secure facility with a gate guarded, I mean, a, a gate that's, uh, got a code for the fire department. You know, they'll be able to access it. But, uh, after six o'clock, you know, but there's no reason, if somebody's in Iraq and their car's stored, nobody's gonna be, you know, I'm the one that's gonna maintain the vehicle, uh, not servicing, but just starting it up, uh, moving it off the spot. But once they're in there, they're in there for months at a time. It's not gonna be a situation of someone coming, you know, daily to check on their car. Uh, you know, you're storing them because the people are deployed. Or somebody could have a classic car. They might have a classic car that's real valuable.
Are you, are you comfortable with the conditions as stipulated by zoning and staff?
Oh, yes, sir.
Because you mentioned earlier that you could keep the signs. You said that.
Yeah.
That ain't what zoning and staff said they want you to do.
And I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna remove them because it's unsightly now. The only sign will be the tower and that will have four nice ten-by-nine signs. I'll probably put a lighting system inside, you know, the tower, kinda frame in a tower like it was a sign. But all those signs on the building, those pole signs come down, um.
Four ten-by-nine?
The existing tower. You know, you might, you go to a mall and you.
I've seen your tower out there. I'm, I'm very familiar with it.
When you go to a, a big strip center.
Is that in compliance with our U D O?
Everything will have to be in compliance, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Spears.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, I'll go to you for action.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McDougal?
I recommend, uh, approval as noted by the city staff.
Second.
Is that a motion or a recommendation?
That is.
It's a motion by Mr. McDougal, seconded by Mr. ARP. Counsel, discussion on the motion?
That's with the standards.
Saying none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Mr. Harmon, before you get started, I'd like to just take a point of privilege and welcome the Sandhills Regional Principal of the Year, the luckiest lady in the world, the love of my life. Welcome, Kim. Good to see ya.
Getting them cheese.
She's the luckiest lady in the world. Eight-point-zero-two, Mr. Harmon, go ahead.
You should've said that yesterday on Father's Day.
The, uh, next case we have before you, next public hearing, is a request for rezoning from a single-family ten district to our Elsie Limited Commercial District, uh, located at ten-thirty-seven Seventy-first School Road. Uh, we do have a protest petition that has been validated with this, uh, particular case. And I'll go through the particulars of that and explain, uh, what that will mean to you, because we don't get those very often and they, uh, do, do do a little things differently than, uh, how we normally do business. Just to give you an idea of where the property's located, uh, Seventy-first School Road here, uh, to the north, uh, you're gonna come to, uh, Cliffdale Road and to the south, back down to Rayford. Um, we've got a church to the north, another church here, a property over to the south, uh, auto repair place here directly to the south, uh, some industrial, uh, activity across the road, landscaping business, uh, to the southwest. Um, as you can see, most of this area, uh, on the, or all the area there on the eastern side of Seventy-first School Road is still zoned, uh, for, uh, residential activity. Uh, the stuff on the west side, uh, is commercially and industrially zoned. Uh, just a brief of the things that are in that area currently, uh, commercial activities again on the properties I showed you, the church just to the north, uh, commercial industrial activities across the street, uh, as well. Our land use plan, uh, calls for low-density residential on this property. The, uh, properties here to the east and south that are in the orange, that's a medium-density, uh, residential. And then the purple areas across the street, uh, the land use plan suggests, uh, that those be industrial areas. Um, now back to the protest petition. Um, with a protest petition, uh, what you have is, uh, the property in the middle, and just to give you a little background, protest petitions come from the North Carolina General Statutes, uh, one sixty-eight dash three eighty-five, three eighty-six. Um, and so, what you have to do according to those general statutes is here in the middle is the property in question. Uh, you notice there's this red hatched buffer that goes around the property. That's an area within one hundred feet of the, uh, property applying for the rezoning. Uh, then we have this gray area, which the state legislation says if there's a road right-of-way within, uh, within that buffer that's less than a hundred feet, then it's taken out of the area of calculation. And then, uh, lastly, we have these orange areas, which are homeowners that signed, uh, petition, that's part of your packet, uh, in protest of this rezoning. And so, basically, anywhere that you see these orange, uh, hatchings overlapping the red hatchings are the areas where those signers, uh, own property within that five, within that one hundred-foot buffer. If you're able to get five percent or more of that buffer area, the owners of it to sign the petition, then it's a valid petition. In this case, uh, five-point-nine percent of the people owning the area within that hundred-foot buffer sign the petition. And so, what that means to us tonight, uh, since it is valid, is that it takes a supermajority of counsel to pass this tonight. And by supermajority, that means eight votes instead of the typical six. I'm sure we'll probably have some questions on that when we come back. Uh, this is a photo of the property as it sits currently. Um, it is a, uh, it originally was a church. Uh, the applicant actually now, uh, runs funeral services out of this facility. Um, they have for a number of years. Um, they did apply for a rezoning back in two thousand and seven, I believe it was. It was turned down by council as well. Um, but we're looking at, uh, very similar circumstances to what, uh, they were looking for at that period of time. Um, this is just the, uh, stuff to the southwest. This is the property, uh, repair shop to the south, uh, the, uh, industrial to the, uh, west and the, uh, church, uh, Kingdom Hall to the north of this property. Um, the zoning commission did recommend approval of the rezoning. Uh, that was based on that, uh, part of this business was already operating at the location, uh, and that they, uh, had an agreement, uh, for additional parking next door at the Kingdom Hall. Um, staff had recommended denial of the proposal and that was based on the land use plan calling for low-density residential, uh, the fact that city council had denied a similar requet, request on the property in the past and there wasn't, uh, any real changes to this application or to what was going on in the neighborhood that seemed to change what council said before. Uh, that the current rezoning request, uh, is for straight rezoning. Anything could be allowed in the Elsie District, uh, that's allowed in it anywhere else in the city. And, uh, staff concerns over traffic volumes and capacity of Seventy-first School Road, which were, uh, issues that were brought up, uh, back in oh-seven as well. Are there any questions of staff before we open your public hearing?
Counsel, any questions, Mr. Harmon? Don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Madam Clerk?
May we have three speakers for this item. The first speaker in favor is Mr. J. Vernon Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening. I'm J. Vernon Peterson, nine-oh-eight Cover Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Uh, along with my brother, uh, Leon Melvin and his wife, Margie Melvin, uh, we own the property at ten-thirty-seven Seventy-first School Road, known as Unity Chapel at Cliffdale. Uh, I, I come before you on behalf of, uh, grieving families who use our service, uh, as a small-business owner. And, uh, as was stated, uh, we represent pretty much ninety-five percent of the property owners who are non-petitioners. Our request is simply for the convenience of the families that we serve. Uh, with the current, with, with, with the current zoning, uh, the Board of Funeral Service does not allow us to do certain things on that property. And it, it is something as simple as offering a family an urn for their loved ones. We cannot show this urn at this property, but we can take the family, after we meet with the family on this property, we have to take the family away to another location so that we can show them something as simple as an urn. And then we come back to complete our, our arrangements. Uh, for the le, for the last eight years, we have, uh, what we think, we've been good neighbors. Uh, we have had, uh, funeral services, memorial services. Uh, we also allow churches to use our facility. And our facility is also available, uh, to the community if it's needed, uh, for, for meetings and such. Uh, we have not in any way, uh, disrupted the tranquility of the neighborhood. We have not disrupted, uh, traffic. Um, and, um, you know, several years ago, when we, we talked to the, uh, city's engineering company, uh, from Cary, um, we found out that any rezoning for our property for use as a, a funeral service wa, was de minimis, meaning that it, it would have almost no effect. Uh, our property, what we do is unlike, uh, a grocery store or, or a restaurant. And I'm somewhat baffled, uh, because there was a plan right across the street for a restaurant that would certainly have created more traffic than we have at the funeral home. So, um, our, our request is, uh, rather simple. Uh, we want to do the best, uh, with those we serve. We have cer, certainly served, um, people in the neighborhood, um, and, um, we are co, a convenience, uh, to the western side, uh, of the city. So, uh, we ask that, uh, your business-friendliness, uh, your kindness to people who are grieving, uh, will allow you to, uh, approve our request.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Kenneth Jones, speaking in opposition. Mr. Kenneth Jones? Oh, okay. Yes, Ms. Sue Jordan?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Uh, my name is Sue Jordan. I'm representing at least six-plus households from the neighborhood.
What's your address, Ms. Jordan?
Six-eight-eight-four Family Street in Fayetteville. Uh, Seventy-first School Road is a major thoroughfare for military and non-military to make their way to Fort Bragg with congestion and number of cars increasing each year. The number of vehicles have increased substantially each year with number of homes being increased on the backside of the housing developments that come onto Seventy-first School Road. Trying to get out of side roads onto Seventy-first School Road can take up to ten minutes due to, uh, traffic grid going, coming from Fort Bragg, school buses, fire department's rescue squad. At our last meeting that we attended, uh, Mr. Peterson thought that there was two-hundred-and-fifty parking spaces between the two churches. The chapel that Mr. Peterson has, has thirty-five spaces. And then I believe he's allowed to use fifteen of the spaces from the Jehovah Witness Church. Um, that gives him a possibility of fifty spaces for a capacity of two-hundred people in his, um, chapel at this time. Overflow parking has been an issue in the past as there's no shoulder, um, parking on Seventy-first School Road due to the deep drainage ditches on both sides. So, the overflow parking, when it happens, is on our property, the dirt road, and I own the single property up front that has no housing on it, so they park there. We did have one funeral services where cars were actually double-parked on our road and we could not get into our own homes. Um, the chapel visitors are coming for a funeral, so they're gonna find somewhere to park. Uh, the Jehovah Witness has a total of eighty-five spaces. And with the chapel's thirty-five spaces, that only equals a hundred-and-twenty spaces total and not the two-fifty that he was thinking there were there. Uh, that's if there's no activity going on at Jehovah Witness Church. Um, the Jehovah Witnesses has Sunday services and they have Wednesday standard church services. They have lots of activities going on. There's rarely a day where there's not at least two or three cars there. And then sometimes they have buses coming in at four-thirty in the morning where their parking lot is full while they go to other, um, church raising or church functions that they have. Uh, one of the reasons Mr. Peterson wants to have the zoning changed is so they can close down their office on Riley Road. But at their church, if you come to the church, there's a sign saying our business office is on Riley Road. Uh, chapel's been here for several years. It was turned down for zoning seven years ago. The only thing that's changed since then is more traffic on Seventy-first School Road. Um, I believe it was a bad investment when they bought the church. They should've investigated to see if it'd be approved for a zoning change when they bought it. And I believe that's why they're trying now, is to have it rezoned. And I believe that's why they're trying now, is to have it rezoned. So if they can't make a, a good business out of it, that it'll be able to put anything they want into it and sell it. So I ask that the council veto it, please. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Kenneth Jones.
Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. My name's Kenneth Jones. I reside at sixty-four, sixty-one Bingham Place. My siblings, my nephew, my daughter, and my mother all live on Family Street. I want to thank you tonight for allowing me to speak for my mother. I don't reside there, but I am a property owner. I just want to express my concern and the issues that have already been addressed, that I totally agree with them, such as the traffic, the parking, the overflow. The emergency services, it wasn't shown, but catty corner to this property also is a Fayetteville Police Department, I mean, Fire Station. And so with the extra traffic congestion in this two-lane bottleneck, it not only would affect the people right there, but a large majority of the city. Okay. I want to remind the city council, as spoken, that it was already turned down one time. And about the zoning commission, and especially number three, where anything could be allowed. And that's my primary thing that I want to address. I was puzzled with the unconditioning zoning request. There are roughly eighty-nine additional uses that the limited commercial zoning will allow. At the zoning commission, it passed three to two. The main reason is because they said they operated it for seven or eight years. And I think at that meeting, the consequences and everything that was, would come out. And I'm speeding because I got a lot to cover in three minutes. I just don't feel that that was brought out in the meeting, and I'm trying to cover that today. Let me read some of the possible things if it is rezoned. Okay, it can be a recycling drop-off center, office warehouse, a repair for scientific and professional instruments, research and development. It can be a boat marine rental sales. It can be automotive parts and service and sales and retails, car washes, taxi cab service. Tire and muffler, convenience stores with or without gas, electronic gaming, a liquor store, a flea market, a grocery store, a mini warehouse. A bar, a nightclub, a cocktail lounge, gasoline sales, entertainment establishment, a laundromat, a tattoo parlor. A golf driving range, animal grooming, animal care, indoor/outdoor kennel, a veterinary clinic, a dinner theater. Restaurants with or without outdoor seating. A helicopter landing facility, telecommunications tower, club or lodge, halfway house, psychiatric treatment care. Group home, large room and boarding house, and traditional housing. That's only a few of the possibilities, all of which we don't feel are appropriate for our area. And we feel again too that the main objective here is to increase the property value, which many of these businesses may would want to accommodate on there.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Mr. Crisp, you had a question. Was that of Mr. Peterson?
I do have a question. Mr. Peterson, if you would be kind enough to come back up. I have a couple of questions, sir, for you. The first question, sir, you said that you represent ninety-five percent of the property owners who are not petitioners. I'm not sure we understand that statement.
Well, what I mean by that is to Mr. Harmon's point, that five point nine percent of those property owners signed the petition. That leaves, I believe, ninety-four point one percent.
Yeah, but how did you become their representative? We got a representative for them up here on this board.
Well, well, I certainly don't represent the entire council district. But there, there were ninety-four point one percent that didn't sign the petition. That was my only point.
Yes, sir, but that does not make you their representative.
All right, point well taken.
Next question. I'm, I'm in a quandary. I remember when this was, your request was rejected in two thousand and seven. I vividly remember it. I'm in a quandary as to why you are back again requesting limited commercial zoning, which gives you leeway. If it's approved, to do all of these things rather than asking for a special use permit. Or some kind of very restrictive, limited zoning that would suit your purpose. And that would satisfy, may satisfy, the residents in that area that this is not a deal being made. That could end up with a bar or some of these other things. I'm in a quandary as to try and understand why you didn't come back asking for a special use permit. Or a more restrictive zoning that would tie it down to exactly what you want to do. Rather than asking us to give you blanket authority to do almost anything you want to do if we approve this tonight.
I, I'm certainly amenable to that. When we went back, I, I went to the planning department for some type of consultation. We have no plans other than to do just what we said that we wanted to do. The reason that we are here really is, the reason we got the property was at the behest of the congregation next door. Because they wanted to make sure that no bar, no other type of business would go there. And, and they saw our business as a kind of quiet type of business that would complement their property. So we have no, no future outlook on doing anything but funeral business.
Yes, sir, and I hear you clearly, but traffic there is a problem. But more than that, there's such a thing as an offer you can't refuse. And if we, you know, if we give you the, the commercial zoning that you request. And somebody comes along and makes that offer that can't be refused. And we end up with something there that's not compatible to that property, which in that area, which is on that side, is owned residential. Then you see where we are. Now, the reason I bring this up, because we've been hoodwinked up here before. Over on Kane Road, we were hoodwinked, all right? And I'm just concerned that after all these years, you didn't come back and ask for a special use permit or a more restrictive type permit. Thank you so much, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Moan, was your question for Mr. Peterson?
My question would be for Mr. Harmon and Mr. Peterson. In the past, we've, we've had these type of cases, and I, I think the clear win-win here is a, is a special use permit. And council in the past has allowed an applicant to come back to staff. We've waived the fee for a special use permit. And then there's conditions set out in the special use permit, exactly what will and will not be at that place. To me, I think that's the, that's the solution.
In this particular case, it would have to come back as a conditional rezoning.
Conditional rezoning.
Yeah, and we have done that. Council has sent ones back. We, I'm trying to remember, we had one not just a few months ago.
Right.
That council sent back through the process conditionally. Property off of three oh one, little vacant property on a side street.
Right, and the neighbors behind, they didn't want it to be used for a bar and this. It just came back for a final vote.
Sent it back through, and they agreed to just do.
And the neighbors were happy, and, yep.
Yep, exactly.
So, and then we can, there should be no additional registration fee for this, right? We can waive that fee, council can?
Council has.
So, I mean, if we're getting close, that'd be my recommendation. I'd be ready to put in the form of a motion, but I know you all may have some questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moan. Counsel, I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, very much for joining us. Counsel, this time I'll move to.
Think we probably gotta make a motion here.
Yeah, but we probably need to take action on what's before us first, and then we can come back and take a.
That's true.
Mr. Wright.
Yeah, I make a motion that we disapprove the rezoning, the proper, of the property from single-family residential. At this time, and maybe at a later date to come back and relook at for.
So your motion is.
I second.
With Mr. Crisp as a second. All right, counsel.
Just, just for clarification, that's the ultimate recommendation offered by city staff?
Yeah.
Madam Attorney.
Mayor, pursuant to your rules, if you deny a rezoning, then they would have to wait a year. If the council has an interest in Councilmember Moan's alternative. Then that would either need to be, that would need to be a part of the current motion for denial.
Okay, Mr. Wright, Mr. Crisp, do you want to make that as part of your motion?
No, I'll just, I'll just maintain the motion.
All right. Motion is deny, to deny the rezoning. Counsel, any questions? I see none, I'll ask for your vote, please. That's an eight to two vote with Mr. McDougal and Mr. Moan voting against. Item eight point zero three is the annexation. Put on my glasses for this one, aren't you, Mr. Harmon? Trace DeCarlo property, Tracy DeCarlo property.
They understood it.
Mr. Harmon?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be playing the part of David Nash tonight. He is in, in the throes.
He talks very fast.
Yes, he's in the throes of a wedding for his daughter, so he's, I told him I would, I would do his annexation tonight. Because I think he's reached panic mode at this point.
He hasn't, he will.
The Tracy DeCarlo property is a property located out on Old Wilmington, just south of the PWC's main campus. We'll see some maps of it here in a moment. Again, the requested action is for annexation of this as a continuous contiguous area. The, it's located in Fayetteville's MIA. Again, they're on Wilmington Highway, two point four acres. It is currently vacant. We've got some photos and stuff we'll show you in a moment as well. Expected future land use, they're looking to do some warehousing on this property for flooring materials. That's what they're looking at at the moment. They do require PWC water, that is the, what, what brought this petition forward. That was done, we received the petition last of March. And five twelve, it was heard by the zoning commission, and then the public hearing tonight. PWC sewer is not available to the property. The water is available in front. Nearest fire hydrants are nine hundred feet, both north and south of the property. But according to PWC, the line is not quite sized for fire hydrants. We made that clear to the owner. And the owner still wants to go through with the annexation because he thinks he has some other alternatives, such as sprinkling the building. Things of that nature to get by doing fire hydrants. The electrical, PWC electrical is available. There are some large DOT power lines that pass overhead on this property. And Duke Power has an easement across a part of this property. You'll see that in the photos here in a moment. There's no streetlights installed in front of the property. And it will not, there's no, no annexation of streets here. So no street lighting related to that. The yellow area with the red borders are current city limits. The blue area down here is the property in question. The kind of yellowish-green area in between the two is a railroad right-of-way. And we're able to annex by petition this property as contiguous to the city. Because it's only separated by that right-of-way. You can note as well, the blue line here is the water main that runs down Wilmington Highway. And then each of these little red dots are fire hydrants in the vicinity of, of this project. This is a photo of the property as it currently sits. Again, like I said, there's Duke Power easement across it, along with not only high-tension power lines, but other power lines as well. This is looking south along Old Wilmington Highway. And then this is the property just to the north along the highway. And then this is the property to the north of this, showing that rail line that separates this property from the existing city limits. Financial impact, because of the reduced rate for water. You can see that'll be reduced from, for them, from four hundred and thirty-three dollars to two seventy-one. The estimated annual cost for annexation for this property will turn out to be about one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. Staff has recommended option two in your packet. If council adopts the proposed ordinance, it would become effective June thirtieth. And for city council to affirm the initial zoning action that you approved previously in your consent items tonight. The petition is sufficient again. City operating departments and PWC would be able to serve the area. And then the budgetary impact would be positive for the city as well. Any questions of staff before we open this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Harmon, Mr. Crisp has a question.
Mr. Harmon, I'm looking at, city operating departments and PWC division should be able to serve the area.
That's.
Normally you come here and tell us, we'll be able to serve the area. Why the deviation here?
Yeah, they will be able to serve the area. The should David had placed in here because of that fire hydrant issue. There's water available, that's what they're after. The question is whether an actual fire hydrant will be able to be placed in front of it. Or if they'll have to go to some other means, such as either sprinkling the building, a combination of fire hydrant sprinkling, things of that nature.
Go back to the diagram that showed where the water line and the fire. Okay, right there.
The water line is this blue line.
Yeah, how far is that hydrant up there, that intersection from the property, that one?
Yeah, you've got one here and one down here. They're both about the same distance, about nine hundred feet from this property.
A long way, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. I see no other questions, Mr. Harmon. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
Great, we'll open and close that public hearing. Counsel, I'll go to you for action, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the annexation request as presented by staff.
Motion by Mr. Colvin, seconded by my, Mr. Wright. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Moan.
And I believe we also have to affirm the prior initial rezoning that we took in the consent agenda. Make that part of the motion. We have to reaffirm the initial zoning that we took during our consent agenda.
Six point zero two, they're tied together.
As part of the, as part of the motion.
Part of the motion.
It's an amendment.
It's in addition, yeah. Yeah, I'll accept that.
Okay, great. Any other questions, counsel? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item nine point zero one, welcome Ms. Smith, the award-winning Lisa Smith, back to the podium. To discuss the establishment of a purchasing office.
Okay, just waiting for it to appear on the screen, but I'll begin. As we discussed at the dinner meeting, we briefly talked. Um, as we discussed at the dinner meeting, we briefly talked about the purchasing function. I'm here to present to you formally tonight our proposal. I shared with you at the dinner meeting some background prior to two thousand and five and our collaboration with PWC as early as two thousand and two. Uh, but what I'll begin with tonight for the presentation is that, uh, in fiscal year two thousand and five, the city had budgeted one senior purchasing technician, uh, two buyers and one office assistant for the procurement function just before formally consolidating with the, uh, Public Works Commission, uh, for that function. At that time, the purchasing function was also supplemented by support from the special projects manager who actually was, uh, at one point, the purchasing director. At that time, the city's annual budget excluding the Public Works Commission was about a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. That's the annual operating budget. And, uh, there were about thirteen hundred and sixty positions, uh, in the city at that time. In terms of additional background, in March of two thousand and five, the city consolidated its purchasing function with its Public Works Commission. And at that time, we transferred, uh, three position to Public Works. The, uh, consolidated purchasing office at that time was responsible for overseeing all procurement activities of the city and its Public Works Commission, for implementing online requisitions for the city, formalizing requisition and contract administration processes for the city, uh, as well as training our staff, establishing an internal user group, and, um, continuing the DBE program, which is the disadvantaged business enterprise program. Some of those items, uh, were, uh, realized more than others, but certainly they have been overseeing our procurement function, um, solely since two thousand and five. As you know, in recent years, city council has expressed a growing interest to focus on local procurement activities. As a result of that, city staff recently conducted a preliminary assessment of the requirements to establish a purchasing office, including surveying our municipal peers, discussing proposed staffing requirements with the Public Works Commission, uh, purchasing manager, and developing a preliminary budget for your information tonight.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Uh, council has already seen the, uh, proposal and it's been in the packets for the, the press and the media to pick up on.
Certainly.
Like to go to Mr. Colvin, please.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a motion that we accept, uh, staff's recommendation or to give, you, you were looking for direction tonight to, to provide us more information about what would be involved with standing up this separate department, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I'd like to make a motion to that effect to give staff direction, uh, to, uh, bring the purchasing functions in-house or at least to provide council with the information that it requested during the dinner session.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Hurst. Alright, we do have a couple of questions on the motion. Mr. Crisp?
Is this, does the motion incorporate the, that under the memorandum of agreement, we have to give notice before thirty June? Is that a part of the?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it is. And just to clarify that for the, for the audience, that, uh, in order, Ms. Ms. Smith, for you to, for the city to, to, uh, bring this function back in-house, they have to give PWC a notice by June thirtieth, at least twelve months in advance?
Yes, sir, that is consistent with the arrangement we have.
So, yes, sir, Mr. Crisp, the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Hurst? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Alright, council, seeing no further questions, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Item nine point zero two is, uh, FAA, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Grant. Welcome, Mr. Christoph Bauer.
Um, Mayor, thank you. Uh, we didn't actually prepare a presentation for this, but this is a kind of a unusual motion, so we wanted, didn't want to put on your consent agenda. But we're here basically to answer questions if you have any. The challenge is that we have a grant that we expect to receive sometime in the next thirty days. We don't have a meeting in the next thirty days. So, we're asking you basically to pre-authorize us to move forward. Once we receive that grant, uh, what, that's the kind of unusual piece, but it's just a timing issue. And, uh, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
And our match for that grant is, uh, pre-budgeted, is that correct?
That's correct and reflected in the ordinance and it's part of the, uh, airport capital plan.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Then I would like to recommend, uh, action, sir? If I may?
Uh, Mr. McDougal, was that a question or?
Yes.
Okay, let's, uh, if you don't mind, let's go to Mr. McDougal's question, then we'll come back to Mr. Hurst for the motion.
Initially upon reading the piece, I was a little fearful. I mean, you were asking for a lot of authority, really. To approve the plan, that, you know, that would just be a, a city manager's decision? Is that right? Uh, what were you asking for?
Well, basically asking for, uh, four steps. The first one is to actually allow the mayor to accept the grant. It is the, usually the, um, ma- mayor that has that responsibility to accept the grant funding from the, uh, the federal agency. Tony, can you go, I'm sorry, I put down the other four.
I'll get there in a minute. You don't have that piece you can put up on the screen for us?
We do not. So, the four steps are to authorize the mayor to execute the acceptance of the grant. The city manager authorized the, the project design contracts. So, that's consistent with the authority that's granted in the, the ordinance itself. So, those contracts have to be consistent with the limited, limited authority provided in that ordinance. And then adopt the project ordinance amendment and the budget ordinance to actually allow that funding to be appropriated and expanded.
Yeah, and I think part of the rationale that you were using is because we were not in session in July. But in this job, there is no time off. This is a twenty-four hour, seven day a week job. So, I would at least have an expectation that you all would share all of that data with us. Um, you know, if there's, you know, if you, you know, the plan, uh, what it's going to look like, that we would have that, the day that, you know. So, somewhere in that needs to say that, you know, even though we may not be in official meeting, that you would be sharing that with us rather than when we come back in August, all of it's kind of, uh, just new to us, so, you know. Hopefully it would be shared all along.
Okay, Mr. McDou- McDougal, my name is Tony Coleman, I'm the Assistant Airport Director. And I thought what we had tried to do in the past, we had our engineer, Talbot and Bright, come down and brief the, uh, city council as well as the airport commission on the project elements that were in the master plan itself. And so, all we're doing right now is there's going to be a, a design phase, and we're getting a, a, a grant from the FAA into the tune of about two million dollars. And all we're saying is that since you're not going to be in session, if when we get that money, we can go ahead and get into the business of designing the project, and we need to add an additional about one point eight million dollars in order to do that. But I think what we have already laid out in the past is what we're going to do with the money. Now, those two elements include, they asked the, the airport master plan update for about six hundred thousand, and then the airline terminal improvements, which is really the environmental, the documentation, the, the design and bidding, uh, phases for that. We'd be happy to come back and, and talk to you about the, the grant itself when it comes in, but those are, are the project elements that will be in the grant.
Yeah, I guess if that be the case, if that be the case then, then you can strike that, you can strike that line out then, talking about authorize the city manager to execute, uh, the project design contract if we've already designed it, why do we need that line in there?
No, we've done the preliminary master plan, which we've presented to you.
I know, I'm just asking the question.
Right, so, so, we will be bringing the final design and the authorization to award the contract back to council once that design is completed.
Yeah, but here you ask that the city manager be given the power to do that execution.
Just to execute-
Execute the grant. That's just to execute the grant.
And, and the design contract with the Talbot-
It doesn't say grant, it says project design contract.
Correct, so the contract to actually move forward, we've done the pre-design.
Alright.
Now, we're going to take that and move into design. And then, once that design is completed, that design will come back to council for authorization to actually ob- bid it and award it. So, this is just moving through forward with the same design firm that did the pre-design work? Into the actual design work now that we have the funding to move forward.
We've already approved the budget for that?
Well, that budget is before you.
The budget ordinance is listed in packet.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Mr. Crisp?
Alright, my question will answer.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I move to authorize the mayor to execute acceptance of the IP forty-three grant upon receipt, authorize the city manager to execute the project design contracts, and adopt capital project ordinance amendment twenty fifteen through thirty-eight, and adopt budget ordinance amendment twenty fifteen through sixteen.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Wright. Council, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item nine point zero three is recommendation of pool locations. Pools location? Pool locations?
Uh, uh, good evening, council, mayor. I guess that's what I'm supposed to be doing here.
Good evening, Mr. Gibson.
How y'all doing?
Great.
Alright. Um, council, this is a, uh, recommendation that came from, uh, the Recreation Advisory Board. The council wanted to get their input. Um, the Parks and Recreation Department is, um, uh, very happy that council saw fit to, uh, increase the budget again this year so that we could add another pool to our community. Um, and, uh, council wanted to get input on, on where that pool should be, uh, located from our advisory board. One of the things that I did was, when, when I went back and had the conversation was, with them, is to get that rationale, um, out in front of them, um, from the last advisory board when we were doing the bond package, so that they would understand where our thought pattern came from and how we wanted to locate the, uh, the elements of the bond package, uh, if we were so lucky enough to get it passed a few years ago. And this is what this PowerPoint does. Explain to you, as well as I explained to the advisory board, how we got to that point. And I, I hope you can see it. But what you're looking at, um, is our neighborhood aquatic center service area and vicinity maps. And, and those circles represent, um, and just to give you a quick background, our recreation centers in an urbanized area are located, uh, in where they are for the simple reason that they should be no more than one point five miles away from the existing urban environment. So, if you were standing at, uh, College Lakes, or if you were standing at E.E. Miller, if you were standing at Kiwanis Center or, or, um, Clifdale, and you wanted to walk one point five miles away from that facility, you would be, uh, in any direction, you would be in an urbanized area. Kids could get there, um, by walking. So, what we did when we were doing the bond package, you say, "Well, it doesn't make sense for us to try to put that many pools in, in an urbanized area." So, what we did was we increased that radius, uh, uh, twofold and went and said, "Okay, we're going to draw a three-mile circle and we'll see how that looks." Well, what we did was, when you, when that comes up in the, um, the twenty-ten census, you, you start encircling zip codes. And if you look at your second slide that I have up there, in the two eight three oh six district and the two eight three oh four district, you can see how many people live in those areas and we had the age breakdown. So, when we drew those circles going backwards, when we drew those cer- those three-mile circles, you can see that two thousand and, um, ten, if you drew the circle, you would encompass like a zip code of two eight three oh four and two, uh, two eight three fourteen, which would have about, uh, seventy-three thousand people servicing that one pool. Um, that would have, be able to get to it from a three-mile walk or a three-mile drive to the center of that pool. And we thought that that made sense at the time, so that people could get there. And when you draw the circles, that's what you end up with. And we said that we had, the existing pink circle is Seabrook, and when you draw the other lines, you can see how they intermingle like the Olympic rings. So, that's how we got there. And we're, we were looking for property. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have to buy any property, that we owned the property. And that's how we came up with the, uh, sites. The Westover Pool, um, that we are already building, we're, good Lord willing, uh, it's going good, uh, is up in the upper region in the two eight three, um, three area. And the, uh, it touches right on the, uh, two eight three fourteen area, um, and touches a little bit of the oh four. So, we thought that that made a lot of sense at the time, and we could service the most, uh, urbanized area when we were doing it. What's left over, um, in talking to the advisory board, uh, from our initial, um, approval were, uh, College Lakes, JW Coon, and Lake Rim area. And you can see what the pools were going to be designed from, a six-lane, twenty-five-yard leisure pool, exactly what we're having over at College Lakes at the time. I mean, not at College Lakes, but over at, uh, Westover Pool. And you can see what they look like, where the properties would be, uh, from this, the aerial map for College Lakes. Uh, the same thing for the Lake Rim area, would be at Lake Rim Park, um, and an existing soccer field now when you come in. Um, that's a different design with a support building. Um, then you can see with the JW Coon off of Hope Mills Road Elementary School. Same place that we're working with the school system now, um, with the new fire station off of Hope Mills Road. Uh, we would master plan that fifteen acres that's sitting right behind the school. And then what the advisory board did was, once they got this information, their recommendation, and, and Mr. Robert Lince is here, our board president, uh, commission president, is they ranked them, and, uh, the ranking was College Lakes, Dade Abbey Coon, and then Lake Rim Park.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, we do have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright?
My question to you is that, you know, you did a great survey, and I like the Olympic ring deal. But how did Lake Rim rank three? What, how did you go about the rankings? I, I know because my whole desire was to have, um, you know, a pool out, out west, either in the Fuller, uh, Rank area or, or Lake Rim, which, which is nice. Uh, how did we rank last on that? How did you go about it?
Well, the, the advisory board, uh, wanted to make sure that if there was another pool coming up in the next year's budget, that it'd already be, the advisory board would already make that recommendation. From a Parks and Recreation standpoint, the way that we got to the sites was, was, was based on the fact that the bond would pass and that we would build them all. So, we didn't have a ranking as far as Parks and Recreation went. We just had site availability because in the bond package, we wanted to build four more pools. So, that would give you that. We didn't rank them. Once the advisory board, uh, started their process, they just said the next pool after their, their recommendation with, uh, College Lakes would be, um, JW Coon and then Lake Rim. So, that was an advisory board recommendation. But as far as Parks and Recreation go, or the council goes, there was-
Okay, okay, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Crisp?
Uh, Mr. Gibson, put, I, the problem I have with Lake Rim, there's no bus service there. And that's not exactly, you talked about kids walking along. Councilman Wright will speak. I think that's, he's, that's your area or... There, we just can't let kids walk along, uh, Old Wilmington, Old, Old Rafer Road. To get there, to my knowledge, there's no bus service on Old Rafer Road that leads to Lake Rim Park. And that's of great concern to us.
Yes, sir.
Now, everything else you're talking about, there's, uh, bus service, uh, Seabrook, there's bus service Westover, there's bus service College Lakes area, there's bus service, uh, JW Coon, no bus service Lake Rim. And I, and I'm, and I'm, I'm sure Councilman Wright will agree with me, I have grave concerns because traffic runs up and down Old, Old Rafer Road. Man, they're fine. There's nowhere for them to walk, so... I, I, I don't have a problem with College Lakes and JW Coon, but I got a problem with Lake Rim. Now, I know, one of our considerations is we don't want to have to buy property-
Yes, sir.
-to build these pools because that just runs the price up. But I, I just got a concern about Lake Rim Park at this time. Until such time as we get a bus service out there, I just don't see these kids walking along Rim Road and, and, uh,
Right, thank you, Mr.-
Old Rafer Road.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp.
I'm fearful of that.
Let me remind you that none of those other pools have been discussed to be funded either, so-
Right.
Let's not, we're not get ahead of ourselves. Mr. Colvin?
Uh, Mr. Gibson, I appreciate it. A couple of questions for you. I understand the Olympic ring and all of that to, to some degree. But, um, I think what would have been a little more helpful to me, being that, you know, this is, this is my district and I share it with, uh, Councilmember Jensen, the zip code over there is two eight three oh one and one one. How many children, where's the demographics report for that? You've given me oh-six and oh-four.
In, in the original bu- in the original book, um, that we did, the bond book, it's in there for every pool. Um, and all of them are basically the same, right at about thirty-six thousand.
And, and this was based on twenty-ten data, right?
Yes, sir.
Because there've been a couple, um,
Yes, sir.
Several family developments.
The numbers, the numbers are a lot worse now than they were, yes.
Okay, and the second, uh, question is, how did you guys determine, um, the location on the property where the pool's located? Because based on the diagram, it didn't appear that it's very visible from Rose Hill Road or the, the other street, which is, uh, Stacy McArthur Road, I think it is. So how did you determine to sit it in the back part of the lot, right?
That, that was the available property that we had, that we knew that we could put a pool.
I mean, we own that entire tract, this outline, right?
Yes, sir.
So how did you determine that it goes on the back left corner versus the back right corner, for instance?
That's the only vacant property that we had in that, in that park area that we could fit the pool in.
Okay, so it doesn't work anywhere else?
No, sir, it doesn't. Not for the size that we had, uh, and we were, when we were doing this, we were looking at the best bang for the buck as far as parking lot, uh, water, lights, the whole.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Gibson, since we're on that subject, I'd like to ask you, um, what is the benefit of placing it in the empty field as opposed to placing it behind the existing rec center where we have current staff? And folks can, uh, use the rec center to host birthday parties and that type of thing before going out to the pool? Why wouldn't we put it right behind the rec center like we did at Westover?
That, that would be a combin- that would be a conversation that we would have to have with the school system because College Lakes sits on school property. So if that's a conversation that we need to have, we'd be more than happy to have that for you.
I, I think that makes more sense.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. McDougal.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wanting to answer Councilman Chris's, um, comment about bus service. There is a connector bus service that goes directly by, uh, Lake Rim, uh, with Hope County, and I think that there's also a fast route that's planned for that area. But currently, there is that connector with the Hope system that does go right by the park on both sides. As a matter of fact, the, um, the old Rayford Road and the new Rayford Road.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Mr. Moan? Ms, Ms. Jensen.
Um, good evening.
Good evening.
I, I, I'm agreeing with the mayor on that we need to look on putting it across where the, um, rec center is, because I do know in this area, when there is baseball games and things like that, that it's very hard to get parking and everything like that. And I, I like the idea of the kids being able to go to the rec center and then going out like they do at Westover. I think they'll just kinda be by themselves out there, and if I'm not mistaken, there's a nice track around there too, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And, and is the pool going around the tra- is the track going around the pools where I'm seeing? Okay, okay, alright, I, I would
We, we will have that conversation.
I'd like to have that, yes, thank you.
I will be happy to facilitate.
I, I would appreciate that, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Arp.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Michael, thank you. Um, Michael and I have a long, uh, experience level with College Lakes Park, and, uh, and I, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna concur, you know, we, we used to do baseball over there. It's a nice little park, and there were a lot of good things that were done. I wanna thank Councilmember, former Councilmember Keith Bates, he was very instrumental in that before I was on Council, and, uh, Commissioner Jimmy Keef when he was on the Council. But one of the problems we had, though, is that those ball fields, Cat, Ms, Ms. Jensen's right, those ball fields, when there's tournaments going on or games going on, there's a lot of cars. And then the other thing is, that part of the park is out of sight and out of mind at night. And that concerns me from a security standpoint, so I think it would be much better to go ahead and coordinate with the, the, the school system to see if we can establish a template of when we do these things too, that, you know, we kinda do them with the schools, because I think it gives it better visibility on the park from security, but also from usage. And, uh, and then maybe there's another way that we can partner with the school system for, for how we would use these things, so. I, I support College Lakes. Last thing I wanna say is, I, I don't think I'm inclined to support other pools on an individual, individual basis. I, I think if we're gonna do pools and parks and recs, we need to develop a comprehensive plan, whether that's a small package, large package. Um, but I think there's a real inherent danger with doing these, they, they tend to become politicized, and, and that's not the intent. The intent is to have a comprehensive plan for how we can improve the quality of life of our citizens in, in the image of our city.
Thank you, Mr. Arp. Mr. Bauer.
Thank you, I just wanted to add that Councilman McDougal's point about bus service in the area, we do actually have a bus line that comes through the intersection of Rim Road and Rayford, Old Rayford. So it's right there, uh, by the corner of the park, and I'm not sure exactly where the closest bus stop is, but we can get that information for you.
Mr. Colvin. Mr. Colvin, hang on just a second. Mr. Wright?
Uh, I just wanted to make an, an observation before, um, the vote, or whatever they're gonna do. We, we didn't discuss, um, Fuller's Rec Center. And that's in a prime location, and I've already talked to the congregation and the pastor about that. Just had not spoken with you, and they've given me the okay, that they would be willing to work with us as long as liability was on the city, and just like we would do any other, um, you know, pool area. But, um, they, uh, they're, they're willing to work with us. Uh, so that's, that's an option, because I would like that particular site more so than, um, the Rim Lake Ball Field, because you've already got an existing center right there with the Fuller Center, and, uh, they're willing to work with us. Quite a lot of activity in that area, and I think it's very suitable, uh, for, for a pool at this time. I just wanted to let, uh, you know that, um, prior to the vote. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, uh, make a motion if we
May I speak one more time?
Uh, this is your third time, Mr. Chris.
No, it'll be the second time, sir.
Well, I'm writing them down, go ahead, Mr. Chris.
This is the second time. Uh, I have to, I have to agree with Councilman Arp. What we really need is a bond to deal with all these pools at one fell swoop. So I think what we're really looking at right now is where we're gonna put the one that's in the pre- presently approved budget. And I don't have any problem with accepting the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Committee, because if we don't listen to these committees, nobody will serve. But I don't think we need to go beyond College Lakes at this time. And I think we just need to start considering a bond package on a number of pools, and then we figure out where. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Davy.
I was just gonna echo that, that I believe this is coming to our August work session to talk in more detail about the, the bond package. Thank you.
Mr. Colvin.
And, and I am gonna put a motion out, but I, I would just like to say that i- in any other discussion about pools and, and recreation facilities, we, we have to do something with the folks out west, uh, as soon as we get a viable plan. Uh, I, I definitely, uh, support that, but in light of this and, and what's been budgeted for this year's budget for this particular, uh, item, I would like to, to make a motion that we accept the, um, the Parks and Recreation Board's recommendation to place the, the, uh, pool at the College Lakes Recreation Center, um, as presented by
Second, Mr. Mayor. Right. He's, yeah, you need to, 'cause he's asked for us to move it, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I would like to explore the recreation center usage, uh, but I would like to place a motion to approve the placement of the pool in that vicinity. Okay, with the specifics to come at the, at, at the conclusion of that conversation.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, that's, uh, Mr. Colvin, seconded by Mr. Arp. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, Council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is nine to one with Councilmember Wright voting against. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Council nine point zero four is city sponsorship Latino connects, Community Connections Event. Is there action? Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Mayor, were, were there any, uh, presentations on this particular item?
No, Mayor, we didn't have any presentation, we are available for questions if you have them.
Mr. Mc, Mr. McDougal.
Oh, did I push my button?
You raised your hand.
Oh, I was scratching my head, but
Alright.
seeing you did call on me, I, I, um, you know, I was having some issues with it as being proposed. A couple of things, number one, um, what's, you know, what you do for one group, you really have to do it for all of them? And, uh, even though, you know, I understand, you know, what's being axed. And also, there's an old, old theory that I always use is you, you start out how you wanna continue. And if you start out giving away, then that's the way you wanna continue, because that's what's gonna be required of you. Um, but we can't do for one what we don't do for others. If we do, we opening up a, a dangerous keg, I think.
Mr. Colvin.
Just wanted to know, uh, uh, get some clarity from staff that, that's been here. Do we currently sponsor any of these other examples that you use in in-kind services or any form of sponsorship?
Councilman Colvin, my recollection is that we listed there, um, other events that were, were, are not currently sponsored.
Okay, so my, I guess my question, are we sponsoring any events where we give in-kind services, uh, a waiver of fees or that kinda thing?
Yes, yes, there's a number of them. Um, we provided them actually during our last discussion of a waiver, uh, when we talked about the, um, ride for the, uh, what's the, the ride for the, um,
Run for the Wall.
Run for the Wall, thank you, sir. Uh, we provided a list of, of all of the events that we sponsor. Uh, there are a number, the Dogwood Festival, for example, the International Folk Festival, the two largest events that we sponsor. Um, so yes, and Run for the Wall, of course, based on previous council action.
So, so I guess my question is, I, I agree with Councilmember McDougal, if we do for one, we, we should do for all. How do, how do we make a determination as to which events are worthy of sponsorship and which ones are not?
In the past, that has been a council, uh, initiative and a council decision. Uh, staff does not, uh, have the authority to, to waive fees, so that has been something that's come forward on a case-by-case basis by the council.
Mr. Moan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanna kinda refresh, make sure I have this right. Earlier this month, we sat up here, we had a council work session, we talked about this. I believe the consensus at the time was, let's do this one year, max out the contribution at five thousand dollars, in our packet, it's roughly estimated to be four point, four thousand eight hundred sixty-three. Or there was a comment made, you know, at the, at the work session, that this might turn potentially into the next International Folk Festival, you know? Uh, and so everybody sat around and said, okay, let's try it one year, uh, cap it out at five thousand. We must relay to the organization that this is not an endorsement for next year. This is one time, one year only, to see how it goes, see if it's worthwhile, see if it brings revenue into the city. And then if it doesn't, then next year, there won't be any waiver of fees. So that's how I remember our discussion about three weeks ago. And I just wanna make sure, uh, I've got it right before I push my red or green button. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. Mr. Wright?
Well, I just understand that this is not, uh, a cash donation from the city, but it's like a waiver of fees. Um, so it wouldn't be, you know, hard cash given to the organization to fund it anyway. Uh, but my question, uh, to, um, City Manager, or, uh, Mr. Kristoff, um, the Dogwood Festival is funded in that way as well?
Yes, the primary Dogwood Festival is funded that way as well. Um, there are other things that the, the Dogwood Organization also promotes that are not sponsored events. But the Dogwood Festival itself, the main event, is sponsored.
The main event of the Dogwood Festival is sponsored by the city.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Jensen.
I'm kind of going back to what Councilmember Moan said. I really don't have a problem if we're doing it for the one year and we have the five thousand dollar limit, because, and if it's in Festival Park, 'cause I think if we can get people down there and we help these, um, communities grow into their festival, which, I mean, my church started theirs twenty-five years ago. And if we would've maybe had the opportunity to do it down at Festival Park, and ours has grown tremendously, it might've been something good for the downtown area for people to go shopping and do things while they were at our festival. I, I think the one-year one is good, and we can give these organizations an opportunity to grow with our city. If we look at it that way, we're looking at five thousand dollars as a max, and, you know, that, that one festival can only do it one time, it's a one-time deal. And for them to come down to Festival Park, they're kind of paying the price too, to show our city. It's a win-win, in my opinion.
Mayor Pro Tim Davy.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you can just explain again the process just for our listening audience. So if anyone's listening and they have an organization and they're possibly interested in taking up on this one-year, five thousand dollar max opportunity, how do they go about doing that?
My understanding of the current process is that anyone who wants to seek a, a waiver of fees or relief of, uh, the charges that we apply for city services, that that is something that comes through the council as a council request. And that's been a council request to a work session where it's discussed by the council, and the council can then provide consensus to move it forward to a regular, uh, meeting agenda for full vote. Timing, I think, is important there, you have just one work session, uh, each month, actually only ele- eleven, sometimes only ten, actually, in a year. Uh, so it's important that you take that in consideration when you want to seek a, a waiver opportunity. And then, of course, it has to be a follow-up, uh, consideration at a regular meeting like this one, uh, tonight. So that means you, if you're thinking about asking for a waiver, you're gonna need to start well in advance of the planned date for your event.
And just a quick follow-up, I, I think Mr. Manager was talking about in regards to a committee, a Festival Park Arts Committee to kinda take up on some of these requests, is?
Well, we have a city, uh, Special Events Committee, which is actually created by statute, which goes through the process of reviewing every application to have an event in the city and talks to those, uh, event applicants about what kind of event they wanna have, what impacts it would have on the facility that they want to utilize, uh, what kind of conditions the city would like them to put on place, uh, what process, what the process is, et cetera. So, for example, if someone's interested in a five K event, uh, they come in, they, they propose a route, and we sit down and we talk to them from a police perspective, from a transportation perspective, from a parks perspective, from a safety perspective. And, and sometimes we ask them to adjust that route to make it more safe, to lower the, uh, impact on city services or other businesses in the area. And then we move through that process toward a permit, um, approval. Uh, so that's something that is a process that moves forward, and in as long as there's no, uh, fee waiver request, you know, then that is something that happens without the i- interaction with the city council. The council has delegated that authority, uh, to the committee and to the city manager's office.
Mr. Chris.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Moan brought up a good point, but, but the thing I wanna emphasize is, we're not doing a budget action here that says appropriate five thousand dollars, but there will be a, a cost to this not to exceed five thousand, because our environmental services has to remove trash, police department has to be there, Parks and Rec, uh, has to take care of the facility and everything. Uh, and, and I wanna tell you this, I, I, for the last three, four years, I have had a conversation with the gentleman who started the Festival of Nations, uh, affair. And what was unique about it, the first year he brought it up, I would imagine the city council was in the same situation as we are now, and were very reluctant to do that, but they took a chance on it. And look what it has grown into. Look at the many numbers of nations that are represented with that and the amount of revenue that it generates in terms of food, entertainment, people downtown and all. I guess what we're saying here is, are we going to take a chance on the Hispanic or Latino community, uh, to see how this thing goes? And if it's not a good thing, as Mr. Moan said, we're talking about one year, one year only. If it looks like it's promising, then we can deal with it later, but, uh, Mr. McDougal made a fine point. I mean, if we do this now, we need to be open to open to listening to requests from other people, even on a one-year basis, this is this, and we take them one at a time and see where we go, or we allow our events coordinating committee to take them one at a time and see where we go. Bottom line is, I think with the growth in the Latino or the Hispanic community, I think we owe it to our citizens to take a chance on them. $5,000, not a lot of money for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Mr. Colvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on input from various council members, I'd like to make a motion that we give a one-time sponsorship not to exceed the $5,000 in in-kind services as discussed for the Latino Community Connections Event.
Second.
Mr. Colvin and Mr. McDougal. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Item 9.05 is the Appointment Committee. Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor members of council, the Appointment Committee, which consists of Mayor Robertson, Councilmember Chris and I. The Councilmember Chris and I met on Friday, May 29th, to review the applications that citizens submitted to fill the vacancies on the city's boards and commissions. And we appreciate, of course, the hard work by our city clerk, Ms. Pamela McGill and Jane Starling, as well as the attendance of all of our staff liaisons to these boards and commissions. With that, I move for council to accept the Appointment Committee's recommendation, which is option one in your packet, for the following citizens to serve on the boards and commissions. That's Ms. Corey House for Board of Appeals on Dwellings and Buildings, and Mr. Roland Fairley for Fair Housing Board, an attorney's position, Mr. William Tally, Favel Advisory Committee on Transit fact, Mr. Tim Wall as the ADA representative, and Ms. Sharon Hackett as a first-term rider. And Favel City Zoning Commission, Mr. Alex Keith. Historic Resources Commission, Mr. Tim Jackson, the Realtor Development General Contractor term, and Mr. Christopher Frank as an architect. Personnel Review Board, Krista Leggett, and Ashley Bruton. Taxi Review Board, Nicholas Connolly. And Animal Control Board Recommendation, George Butterfly.
Second.
That's the motion made by the chairman of the committee, Mr. Hurst, that's seconded by the vice chair of the committee. If that's not your title, Mr. Chris, I just promoted you. Of the Appointments Committee, is there discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. McDougal, and then over to Mr. Chris.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it would be nice, you know, as we, you know, make recommendations that, you know, to have, you know, to have these good folk to appear before us just to be able to set eyes on them. I try not to attend their meetings, because we ask them to make decisions for us and then bring them back to us, so. But just to be able to look on them sometime, I think, would be helpful. So I know them. I see them in the street, I at least would, you know, have some facial.
Okay. Ms. McDonald?
Mr. Mayor, council members, in response to Councilmember McDougal's comment, currently, your policy does not allow for those members to come before you that are seeking appointment. So if that is something that the council is interested in, we would need a policy change as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, can I-
Go ahead, Mr. McDougal.
Well, if it's a policy, then, you know, I don't know the rationale behind it, and if I can figure that out, maybe we need to leave it like it is. But certainly, you know, I need to, I need to take a good look at that policy and understand the rationale for it.
Thank you. Mr. Chris?
I need to say some things here. First of all, Mr. Hurst said that he and I met. I want to clarify that the mayor was here and was involved in some very pressing business, and told us to go ahead, because he wouldn't, he had some things he had to deal with, all right? What I do want to tell you is this, that first-term appointees to these boards and commissions do have to come to City Hall for a detailed briefing, and the chair, Mr. Hurst, addresses them, and every council member can come to that and talk to those new appointees, so you can get to see them. The other thing that I do want to say, I really feel very strongly that there ought to be five people, Mr. Mayor, on that board. Now, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to go back to the system before, where council members were sitting here and making nominations for people out there, and the nominations were being rejected and all of that. So I want to say this to you. This board is open to every member of this council. But I do want Mr. Mayor to consider appointing two more people, so that we have five people on that board. But I do want to encourage you to come. Now, if you don't want to come, they put all the applications online, every single one of them, and that book can be 500 and some pages at a time, and so we go through it. And if we go through it, you can too. But I enjoin you to get involved in this, because this is significant for the city. These, and we do a lot of things. We try to get a cross-section of people from all the districts in the city to serve on these commissions and these boards. We want somebody from everywhere. We want a balance of ethnicity. We want all of that. And we need help with that. And I just don't think you ought to leave that to the three, the mayor and Mr. Hurst and I. But we need more involvement on this. And so, Mr. Mayor, please, give consideration very soon to appointing at least two more members on that board. That's what I have to say. And I did move to second the existing recommendation for appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Mr. Wright?
Just a point of clarification, Ms. Attorney, with the suggestion of Councilman McDougal, I was under impression that once those boards have been nominated and those names have been called out by, you know, the chairperson, if I'm not mistaken, at that time, once they've been nominated, can they show here at the council chamber, so we can identify who those people are?
Yes, sir. I apologize. I misunderstood the statement of Councilmember McDougal. I thought he was requesting that they appear before being appointed.
Okay.
Or nominated for appointment.
Is that, am I clear on that, Councilman? Is that what you were trying to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, once they were nominated, you know, I'm just saying. Mr. Mayor, I pushed my button again. I don't know if it's my turn or not. I'll wait my turn.
It is not. I've got Mr. Hurst first, and then you're next. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
I didn't know if I could even answer him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Chris, for the elaborations. Things that are in my mind that I don't, you know, share with the listening audience. But anyway, I would just make a recommendation to our city clerk that you would let all the council members know when we set that that training session for our new members of boards and commissions.
The orientation?
Yes, the orientation, which I'm usually there for the introduction and open. I think because I was in Arizona earlier this year, Councilmember Chris took my place.
And they wanted me to come back too, special demand.
No, I'm not certain of that, Councilmember Chris. But they get extensive. They're here for a couple hours. And so it's a great opportunity to meet them, and the attendance is really well. So thank you, Ms. City Clerk.
Mr. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for general confirmation, I did ask to serve on that particular committee or team, and to this date, had not been told that I could. Secondly, you know, there have been times that there have been vacancies, and there were no people to fill those vacancies. And I had people that were asking me, and I had them to go online and submit extensive applications, and they not be selected. And thirdly, I have a lot of people that are asking me for, you know, for an opportunity to serve, and I tell them what to do, point them in the right direction. I see the ads in the paper. But again, I'm just expressing to you what I've seen so far. And maybe we can change some of that. I think three of you is not enough. And I did ask to serve there, and to this date, that has not happened. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chris?
At times, and then I said to Councilmember McDougal, on the application, we asked people to put first, second, and third choices. Some people only put one choice. Some people put three choices. But if we have, for example, two vacancies for planning, and we picked two people, but there were six applications, and this happens often, then four people don't get it. Now, we don't get into the business of trying to put people on boards and commissions that they didn't ask for. We try to marry them up with what they asked for. And so we're continually, for example, the Taxi Care Board is one that we have trouble getting people to apply to serve on, and there's several others, okay? So it's really not that simple to fill all of these vacancies. Because if you say to me, you only want to serve on zoning, then we can't recommend you for planning or anything else, unless we talk to you about it. And we do that sometime. We call people. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. There's a motion on floor by Mr. Hurst, seconded by Mr. Chris, to accept the recommendations of the nominations committee. If there's no further questions, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item 9.06 is the suggestion of the resolution to support the Connect NC Initiative. Counsel, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McDougal?
I recommend that, well, I move that we accept and sign whatever initiative or resolution to make this happen.
Okay. Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Davy, since that's her first for the night. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. That passes unanimously. That will also go in with the resolution that has been passed by the county commissioners. Thank you, counsel. Counsel, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.